February twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five meeting is called to order. We're gonna have invocation by yours truly. And then Councilman Harrington is gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance on tonight. What we stand for, prayer and pledge. Let us pray. Gracious God, our Father, we thank you for this day. We give you glory and praise for giving us life. We have read recently in the obituary of life that has been taken away at such a young age. So God, I pray that you would keep those Nagus families as they are going through this difficult time. That you would give them the comfort that they need. But also, God, I think that you would be with us and lead us and guide us that we are very passionate, very determined. We have strong will and a strong desire to see this city move forward in the best way it possibly can. So God, I thank you for blessing our efforts that are really for that end to prosper the city of Nagus. Keep us during this time of what is economic uncertainty. Those families that have been devastated by the sudden news of the closure of the Red River Paper Mill that has been in our community for fifty years. I thank you that they would not only find job placement, but find joy and happiness. In your son Jesus' name, we do ask these blessings. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Councilman Harrington. All right. Next, we've got our reading and approval of the minutes from our most recent meeting on the tenth of this month.
Mayor, I would like to make caution that we've dispensed with the reading of the minutes of February tenth, two thousand twenty-five, and the minutes be adopted as recorded. No corrections.
Motion made and seconded. Any comment about this particular motion? All right, CNN, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli Nelson Smith Harrington PT.
All right, that motion carries. Allow me to read this. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones during this meeting. The City Council encourages public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. However, this time limit may be reduced if there are numerous speakers on a particular item. To ensure efficient proceedings, all persons addressing the City Council shall state their name and shall speak in a civil and courteous manner. Speakers shall address the agenda topic only to which they are speaking on and shall not be repetitive. Members of the audience, please respect the rights of others and do not create noise or other disturbances so as to disrupt or disturb persons who are addressing the City Council, council members who are speaking, or otherwise impede the orderly, excuse me, the orderly conduct of the meeting. Again, as I express all the time, thank you for adhering to those instructions. All right. I wanna just, before we allow Ms. Jessica Broadway to come in, she could start making her way here. I think everybody knows Jessica. And we appreciate the work they do on behalf of the city. But I do want to say when Jessica finishes, we're gonna move up the report, the financial report for Ms. Clarissa Brown Smith, okay? All righty. Jessica Broadway, floor is yours.
Good morning, not morning. Good evening. It's been a Monday during tax season, y'all. It's been pretty brutal. So, good evening. I'm here to present the audit report as of May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. It's now almost that time again, but I have not had a chance to come here and report.
We'll just have you state your first and last. I know we all know you, but...
Jessica Broadway. I'm from Thomas Cunningham Broadway in Totah here, but we shorten it to TCBT. It's a little too much. Do I push it? Do you just go to the next one? Okay, so I'm just gonna kinda go over the general fund here. We have, there's many other special revenue funds and, but the income that comes in them has to be spent specifically within that fund. Our general fund is what is paying for all of the parts of the city. The public safety, streets and sanitation, other than other grants that we get. But what I wanted to show here is of the total expenditures for two thousand twenty-four, our public safety was the largest expense at sixty percent. The way these are funded, the way these are funded are by our ad valorem taxes, sales tax, and the biggest is our, the transfers from the utility fund. Without those transfers from the utility fund, it would not be possible to provide the public safety and everything else that the general fund provides. And as we know, with IP closing, we are gonna have an effect to the ad valorem and sales tax that the general fund is currently receiving. So the utility fund will then have to pick that up in some way. Next, please. These are how the revenues of the utility fund, the excess are used. You'll see that the majority of it is going to the general fund to support our city. But some of it is also to pay for liability insurance, health insurance. We're still paying off the streets that, the expense that occurred four or five years ago. But the mayor's doing really well at paying that down. So that's where that transfer is coming from. So eventually, that's gonna kinda go away. Next, please. The other thing I wanted to show, and I thought this was very interesting when I was creating this PowerPoint, was, I know the big issue last year was the increase in electricity rates. Well, when I actually pulled them together, what you see here is the revenues have actually decreased by seven point five million, but the cost did the same. And if you look, the gross profit has actually increased even though the revenues decreased and the rates increased. This is because of the PCA charges, which was mostly fuel cost that was causing this increase, causing the, which was being passed on to the customers. So, in truth, the customers' payments actually were less even with the utility rate increase. So, I just wanted to share that with you. I just thought that was really interesting when I pulled that together today. I really have touched on very little here, but each of you have been given a copy of the audit report. I'm available at any time for any questions. What, Mayor?
What's that?
What are you making that face for?
Well, look, you said the PCA and how it was passed on. I just thought about a question I was asked recently. Somebody made, referring to another city, and kinda saying, well, why doesn't the city of Nagus pass it on as well? And I'm like, Clarissa and I talk, we already do.
Right.
So whenever the PCA is low, for us, that's not an opportunity for us to kinda try to make some extra revenue. We pass those savings on, as it has been low for ten, twelve months? Yeah, last ten, twelve months, it's been pretty low.
And see, this was just a small portion of when the rates had changed, you know? So, but like I said, I just, I just thought those numbers were very interesting. But as always, I have a really good relationship with the city. Clarissa does a great job, gets me everything I need. So, I just, I appreciate y'all.
So what's the breakdown? So, so actually with the plant closing stuff, what's the actual really revenue that we was getting from, do you know?
I don't know that.
And we discussed that, I'm sorry to jump in, but we discussed that with the Nagus Tax Commission. And you can't put a number on it right now because the major effects are within the parish, which is outside of the city. What we're gonna see is an impact on sales tax because families may not be able to go shop as much, go out to eat as much, things of that nature. Me and the mayor was talking and just looking at some of the things that IP has put out as far as severance packages and things of that nature, and just looking at the scope of their employees. We, it may be, maybe eight months before we actually see that impact because, you know, they, they're still operating at this point. There are potential severance packages. And then also, we were able to get the figure as far as how many of those individuals actually lived in our, within our city. And I think we're, I think it was like two hundred and two of them actually lived in city limits. Everyone else was either in the parish or outside the parish. So, not to say that we won't see a major impact, but that just kinda gives you an idea of what type of impact we'll see. It's not like with the tax assessor and they could look at the property taxes and say, this is actually dollars that are going out. We're just gonna see it because just the activity within our city may lessen because the revenue is not there within the homes.
It sounds like over half lived in the city.
Yes, it was. So it was like two hundred and two, I think, something like that is what they reported to us, actually living in the city limits. So it's kinda hard right now to say.
Gross profit, we had, so we have a profit, I'm looking at for the two thousand twenty-four with the increase.
For the utility fund? Yes, ma'am. The, there was actually, the general fund actually had a deficit of one point two million, but the utility fund had a profit of two point eight million. So, the utility fund actually had enough profit to cover that general fund deficit and still extra to, to cover any other shortfalls that may occur in the future.
And that's why the, the rates are built the way they are. The rate that stays in-house, that's why we built, well, that's why, not we, that's why it was built that way. Is to make sure that we always rendered a net income. And then the PCA is outside of all that, we, that's just money being paid to the power provider. So that is something completely separate. And that's what we like to try to explain when people are seeing those changes in their bills. It's not the rate that the city charges, we keep that at a standstill, it's the PCA rate.
So have we changed over to the new company or that's in May?
That's in May, yes.
So basically, we seeing the extra rate from CLECO rate?
This is CLECO, this is CLECO.
So that's why the rates like this, because I know they rates went up like a little tad bit from what CLECO was, okay?
Who's, who's rates?
LPA, what it is.
LIPA?
Yeah.
Now, from what the information that we received, they won't be over CLECO's rates, not on average. They should not be, not based on the historical rates that came from CLECO. We've just seen a tremendous drop, which we actually are continuously seeing that even into this next month in fuel costs. But, you know, of course, you never know what there's gonna be, you know, and especially going into summer months. But based on the information that LIPA gave us, they are, they will hold steady. I don't think you will see just a large leap.
So it'll be May?
Yeah, it'll be probably June before they actually see LIPA's rates.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Jessica. We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, so, Council, again, wanna move up the, the financial report for Mrs. Brown Smith, this side?
So thank you, Mayor, so much for moving that up for me. And we'll just go through the sales tax data. It'll look a little lean because this is actually, their new year's starting. So on some of the reports, you'll only see one month reported, and then on some reports, you'll see the fiscal year reported. You just go back to that first, yeah, there you go. That first little pie chart. So you could just see, to date, this is what the city brought in, is the one point three million. Again, this is calendar year, so it's only reporting January here. So, it'll look a little different. I'll make sure I try to note that as we go through the data. But one point three, almost one point four million dollars for Nagus collections for the month of January. The next slide you should see is just a graph. Again, it looks a little different, but when you're looking at over the last three years, being that we collected almost one point four million for the month of January, we are up three point three percent. So we're up forty-five thousand over the last year. So, a good start to the new calendar year. The next slide you will see is just giving you a different picture of that same information. You can see where we were from twenty-three, twenty-four, and you can see where we at twenty-five in January of all three years. So you can see where you see, there is an increase over the last three years. And again, that increase was three point three percent. So this next slide shows us on a fiscal, a fiscal basis, so that's why you see more months reported there. So of course, you know, our year starts in June, but we're looking at the month of January. The yellow being two thousand twenty-five, and you can see where it exceeds the same time last year. You can kinda just show how that, that amount exceeds last year. So that's just a bar graph, a comparable bar graph that kinda shows you how we fare each month of this fiscal year. And we pretty much exceeded every month except two, if I'm not mistaken. So still trending in a positive direction. Again, they, they show us this information in various ways, but I don't mind sharing. I actually like to show the different views. Again, you can see over the last four years, our tax collections, and again, trending in a positive direction there. This is fiscal year information here. So this is as of January, but starting in June. And we're actually, for the fiscal year, we're actually up four point four percent. We're up four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So we brought that more in this fiscal year than last year's same time. Okay, again, just kinda showing that information month by month. Again, we did exceed last year same time, so. You can scroll up, Mr. Steve, to the next, or scroll down, I'm sorry. You can keep going. Looks like they duplicated. I don't know why it was like, that's probably my fault. I'm sorry, Ms. Stacy. TIP tax, slightly down from last year same time. You can see we were down actually seven thousand dollars. So not a large dollar amount, but we are down from same time last year. And it just shows you a month by month review, but we are slightly down there. So not too alarming, but we are down. Kinda showing that collectively here again, the TIP tax and us being a little bit down from last year. You can go ahead, Mr. Steve. So this is sideways. I'm so sorry. Can we, can we turn and see? There we go. So, again, this is the TIP district collections report. And again, it looks a little slim in numbers on the two thousand twenty-five because it's the first month. As I was reviewing this, we are down pretty much in all of our TIP taxes. So we definitely wanna keep an eye on that. And when I say down, just compared to the same month last year. I think TIP A is the only one that showed a increase. All the others showed a slight decrease. And if you can look, the total to date for the month of January was thirty thousand and twenty-four, and it's twenty-seven thousand and twenty-five. So, slightly down. So we always wanna, you know, keep a close eye, make sure that that doesn't become a trend.
And your tips are, although, I'm sorry. Your tips are all your EDD, is that what it is?
Well, it's called EDDs and just additional tax. So there's the hotel occupancy tax there that you see. Yes, sir. And you can go to the next chart, Mr. Steve. Okay, so this is the actual EDD. Again, just taking a look at them from last year to this year in January, slightly down. So we definitely wanna make sure we keep an eye on that. Of course, there's gonna be some things that we can avoid, i.e. the IP closure. You know, we will see things like that go down because these EDDs are in commercial areas, shopping, you know, restaurants and things like that. So you may see a slight trend downward just because of that closure. I think that's, I think that's all of the financial report.
So you said the TIP is related to the hotel occupancy?
Yeah, that, that first chart, that showed the two percent hotel occupancy tax. And then the second chart showed the economic development districts that are being reported.
Probably just, is that meaning less hotels are being used?
Less hotel stays.
Stays?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. And hotel stays are a little bit different because that could be just the time of the year. People are not traveling to Nagus, not, you know, because it's the beginning of the year, people kinda slow down after the holidays. So, that, that may be a little bit different. But the EDDs, we will need to pay attention to those because, of course, those are gonna be tied directly to your activity within your city. Yeah, retail, so, yes, ma'am.
But you said down, I'm sorry. You said the EDDs?
Yeah, the revenue collective, yes, ma'am. When you're comparing January of this year to January of last year, we are down slightly. I could tell you collectively, all the EDDs collected seventy-three thousand same time last year. This year, it's sixty-four thousand. So, you can see where we are slightly down. Now, again, that's not directly tied to IP because that's something that just happened. That's just, it's the beginning of the year, you know, shopping, things like that. The retails that were available last year are not available this year. So, you know, those are some variables there, but we definitely wanna keep an eye on it.
Can be weather related.
Oh, yeah, it has been a cold beginning of the year.
Well, a lot of rain, too.
Yeah, a lot of rain.
Cold December.
Yep, yeah.
They were had that other clothing store that had clothes, what was one of the?
I know, you know, Big Lots closed.
Yeah, and then the little one that's over there by Shoe Department.
It's Fashion Rainbow.
Yeah.
Yeah, so some of the retailers that were in the area at that time last year are not in the area. So that, I mean, that's a great point.
Three actually really tied into why the numbers are actually really low.
Right.
Ms. Brown, I got a quick question. With the Economic Development District, which one, if I was flying hard, I always have to ask that question?
Flying Hard is E.
Is E?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They're doing pretty good, it looks like.
They are, they say that there's only two businesses. We always say that every month, you know, that it's...
You say two, but really, I mean, that's two. You're right, that's two. But the other one, the only one that's open every day.
Right, right. Flying Hard is the only one that's open every day. Because I don't think that Riverside is open.
They used to open the restaurant, but I think that's just only...
I don't think they're doing it yet.
I think they do events and stuff.
They're doing well.
Flying Hard is doing really well.
They're doing well.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Show some promise.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Brown Smith. And I thank you, Council, for being willing to move that up, and I know we normally have it at the end. The mayor update, y'all, I'm gonna be brief. I just wanted to kinda share, and I got all y'all in here also, the listening audience. And I just appreciate Steve because I wanted to create a presentation, but Steve has been really good on the fly for us today. So, just to kinda talk about some things that we've got that I hadn't been able to share. I think we've got some images. But while Steve is getting some of those images, and I really appreciate him being flexible, how about I say it like that with me? But I wanted to say something about the RACE grant. You remember in August of two thousand twenty-two, it's coming up two and a half, two and a half years now, is where we are. So, it's moved slower than I thought it would, but there is progress and work happening on it. You don't see any dirt turning, but there is still some things happening. So I just wanna just briefly read this little synopsis from Nick Verret. He's, he's our, you know, what you call our, gosh, he's engineer, but, a point of contact, but that's another. Responsible and charged, I guess you wanna say it like that. But about the RACE grant, the design contract was advertised by DOTD because you remember that we said we wanted them to manage the grant, and it was awarded to Gresham Smith. So that is a firm of Baton Rouge, so that's a firm of Baton Rouge. We had a kickoff meeting, subsequent discussions relative to the project scope. Gresham Smith has drafted and submitted an initial services contract document, and it's currently being reviewed. So it's for the initial phase, all right? So it's not the entire phase, but it's the initial phase of the contract. And then there's gonna be an execution of this, and their first task will be the topographic survey of multiple project sites. So, topographic survey. Ed, what are we doing there?
Elevations.
Elevations, okay, look at that. All right, so elevations, okay, so that's what we're doing there. So it's moving, dirt's not turning, but the project is still moving. Because there's some things you gotta do before you get to construction, and trucks moving in, and pavement being put down, so. But I wanted to share this one with you. Anybody knows what this is?
Mill site.
Ah, it's a mill site, okay, yeah.
There was concrete poured.
What's that?
There was a concrete pad poured.
Yeah, yeah, so you've been noticing some stuff?
Oh, yeah, it looks good even though it's still rough.
It's still rough, and so we've talked to, so we've got one owner. So the Mill District is, you know, the brewery and its Riverside Reserve. Of course, the city-owned side is the brewery side. So we had that fence up there, and so we've taken the fence down, had the barbed wire. We've taken that down, and we had to, of course, go through approvals with DOTD because this highway here is known, I mean, it's, it's, that's Mill Street, right? Isn't that Mill Street?
Yeah.
So, yeah, it is, it is a DOTD street. So they've got some things happening. Ed or Donald, y'all wanna say something else about this? What is going on here?
Yeah, Flying Hard, Ben Patel of Flying Hard had requested that we remove the fence. And, you know, it, it makes it look more appealing. It doesn't look like everything's locked behind the gate, it doesn't look like everything's closed. It'll be, you know, more, I guess, street appeal when people drive by and see that it's open. And between removing the fence, putting in the wheel stops along the perimeter, that keeps vehicles from just entering and exiting wherever they want. And we're trying to force everybody a little further to the south, to the new driveway where it's not in the curve, be a lot safer for people coming and going. And then we also fenced off the south end of that property so that people just can't randomly, you know, go walking around. The other buildings are, have been barricaded, they're, you know, closed off so people can't just walk around that don't belong in those buildings. And we're also getting ready to start the seawall project down, down the slope. We had the pre-construction meeting tomorrow and hope to start within about ten days to two weeks on the seawall.
Okay, thanks after that, you know? It gets exciting about little projects. Now, this is a very small project, and you may have seen some work happening. And I wanted to just make sure we share with you what's going on. We let that EDD build up, and then maybe we come back with another project. Maybe it's a parking lot, or maybe it's signage, or maybe it's some beautification effort. But that's what we wanna share that. All right, now this one, I've got several pictures, just wanted to share that. Y'all know what this is?
Skybox.
Skybox, okay, this is Skybox. So what we've done, we budgeted some, some funds last year to develop a teen center. You heard me mentioning this, and we're working out some details. We had some kinda before-after pictures, so these are kinda all kinda put together. But, I mean, got the nice color. One of these rooms we're gonna use, I'll just say one thing, I don't wanna say everything, right? But one of them's gonna be like a little podcasting room where teens primarily could develop and do podcasts, under some strict adult guidance, of course. But, but yeah, so again, you saw, that was before the floor was put in right there. So that's what we're developing it on. We're gonna have to hire some people to kinda manage it on a part-time basis. Maybe be open three days a week until we can expand it to maybe four, then maybe five. But really try to develop our teens. And one of the things the charter states is, is you have sports, football, basketball. But if you read in there, it's, it has a little, little, I don't know if you remember Kevin, but a little addendum and other activities kinda thing. So that's what we're trying to do, is that other activity. There may be, I mean, we did meet with some students, and we kinda got a little group to see what are some things that the teens will want. But we might have an artist to come and show them how to develop, you know, a song. We certainly wanna have some character opportunities there. So this is not just gonna be a play zone, you know, do what you wanna do. We certainly want it to be structured, and certainly those employees that we hire, they're gonna help to, to bring some structure to that. So, um, I think the construction will be done, certainly by the middle of March. I think that's easy, you want to furnish it. Um, definitely want to have some computers, maybe some iPads in there as well. We got a, you know, little podcasting room and things like that. But, um, yeah, it's just want to appeal to our teens, and it'll be a specific age. Teen, you know, thirteen to seventeen or eighteen. Uh, but again, monitored by hired adults, okay?
What about that, that, um, that fence?
Oh, the part that's missing?
Yeah, the, the upkeep. I like the color of it, but I don't like the background of it.
The background with the fence?
The fence.
Yeah, all the fencing and, uh, um, the, you know, it just.
You're just talking about the whole part there.
The whole part.
I think the fence is coming down, my understanding.
Well, we do have the plan for that. Now, obviously, that's a lot of money. We don't know exactly how much it costs, but, you know, I think over time, we want to try to make improvements to this park. And if we can find funding, I know it's maybe challenging nowadays to find that federal state funding, but what's that?
Before it opens and stuff, they need a good clean, like the whole park thing need a good clean. Like the weeds and, you know, the, the ground part of it and stuff.
You know how you do, document some things for me. You know how you do. You're willing to list, you're willing to list.
You're list.
All right, but yeah, that's teaching, and we'll get a little sign and everything. All right, I think he showed you, what's the next thing you showed him, Nick? I'm sorry, I'm not Nick, Steve?
It looks nice.
Yeah, yeah, I think they're doing a good job.
Next slide.
Yeah, he's getting it. I think y'all saw that next one. Okay, all right, y'all know what this is?
What is it?
I just had this in my phone. I think, uh, what, what's his name? Oh, Butler, what is his name?
Wiley.
Wiley, so he did really good. I didn't even do many posts, he did a really good job kind of explaining, I think he.
Hall of Fame, yeah.
Yeah, in front of the Hall of Fame.
I was there that day, yeah.
But I, I guess just to say though, and of course, it's been put together, uh, we got the folks, we get some folks out of Shreveport that come and, um, what's her name, Laura, Laura, I think? They come down, of course, paint, put the papers back. I don't know if Wilson had anything to do with this, but, um, it, it, it's a, um, is it a collapsed sewer line we're saying? What is that? What is it, Donald, what calls it? Do you know?
Water and sewer?
I think it was, uh, water and sewer.
Water and sewer?
Yes.
Yeah, we're seeing these, I, I met with Donald and Nick, and unfortunately, we, we got these. Now, some of them smaller than this, but developing throughout town, so we're going to have to really budget going forward, just to budget money. Because I mean, it, you don't really just know when it's going to happen, but it, it happens. This one happened, we had no idea it was going to happen, so. Um, but yeah, but that's been repaired, just, I saw it in my phone, I said, I'll share with you. I think that's just a couple others, uh, Steve, I'd like to just talk about. I don't have an image of the water treatment. Well, I do, that, that's the water treatment, but I don't have what the project looks like. And honestly, I haven't been back there in some time, but this is the Clearwell. Um, that's the project that's less than a million dollars. I think we had a little bit of savings on it. Um, so that's what you're looking at, that's the Clearwell. So we're gonna, they're gonna paint it, I think it's going to be like a gray color, and then we're going to come back with the NSU. They kind of got a newer design, it's just with the state of Louisiana in it, so we'll come back with that. I thought about putting my picture up there, but you know. I'm joking, I'm joking. But, but yeah, so we'll, 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 we'll get that painted. So just wanted to share that with you, but of course, that's on the NSU side where I took the picture, Chaplin's Lake right there. And I'll have another update for you later on about the actual water treatment plant project, but I just didn't include it here. I think that might be, is that all I got to you?
Well, that's all I got.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so just wanted to share that, that's all it really was. Any questions or comments about those? All right, certainly reach out to me, um, if you do. All right, let's move on to, we have a short agenda, uh, tonight, um, and the first one is final, and is read by Councilman Harrington.
I'll read this, uh, introduction only as it was introduced, uh, I mean, I'm going to read by title only as it was introduced last meeting. Ordinance authorizing concession agreement in favor of Lazion's Meat Pies Incorporated to handle concessions at Park Nagus, including right to sell food, beverages, confections, merchandise, products, and other similar items, confirming the term of the agreement, conditions, and consideration for said agreement, and authorizing the mayor to execute the said concession agreement on behalf of the city, providing for advertising, further providing for severability, and further providing for repealer and effective date of ordinance. I move to adopt ordinance three of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All right, motion made in seconded. Park has been up five years. It was a competitive bid the last time, we did a competitive bid this time. I know we put it out, social media, we went several places, and there were some folks who, um, I don't know if we sent it directly to Kevin? We sent it directly to some people?
Requests.
What's that?
Requests from the past, like, months past, we kept documentation where they had requested when it came over.
Mm-hmm.
And we sent it to those people personally.
Yep, so we said there were some who, who showed some interest, but ultimately ended up being just, just Lazion's again, so. Um, that's the only one we received, and, and I say that not to say that that's not a good thing, just to say, uh, transparency, right? Um, so I think the food is, is good. Now, some people say what's ballpark food and not, and we've kind of talked about how we can deal with some of that, maybe ballpark. And it's not on Angela, really, we didn't put the hood, hood bin in because it was going to cost a hundred thousand dollars to do. So it was a cost thing involved in it, uh, so that means you can't fry, I think.
No meat pies.
Yeah, no, no meat pies, no french fries, things like that, that some people may consider to be ballpark food. So that, that's why you have that, so there's no fault to Angela, it's just, you know, you try to save money where you can, all right? Any, any comment about this? Great, seeing, um, Mrs. Stacy Rolco.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion, uh, carries. All right, next, and Council, I don't know if I shared this with you, but, uh, I thought I did. But what, what this is, I know we did the housekeeping, and we may have done something as late as October, I don't, I'm thinking, with Sabine Bank, but Sabine is being purchased by a credit union. And help me out, Ed, by law, is that right? By law, we can't.
Yes, my understanding is.
Our, our funding cannot be with a credit union.
Right, and they're out of, the new one's out of state as well.
And they're out of state, it's Texas-based, is it?
Yes.
Texas-based, okay? So that's why we're having this, um, right now. Again, if I didn't share that, it's just something that may have slipped my mind. So we went through a process, RFP, went to some banks, so Councilman Nelson, I'm, I'm just saying stuff.
Without further ado, thanks, Mayor. Ordinance number four of two thousand twenty-five, and the ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Nagus, Ronnie Williams, Jr., to enter into a banking services agreement with Bank Montgomery and approving of the terms and conditions of same, all after due compliance with the law and further providing for advertising and for an effective date. Whereas the city of Nagus, Louisiana, is a political subdivision of the state of Louisiana, being a home rule charter municipality created per se to the constitution and revised statutes of the state of Louisiana. Whereas further, the city solicited proposals for banking services under RFP number zero three two one dated January twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, and has received and reviewed proposals from Citibank and Trust Company and Bank of Montgomery. And whereas further, the proposals have been reviewed by a committee of Clarissa Smith, Ronnie Williams, Jr., Jenna Severance, and Ed Lee, who identified the proposal from Bank of Montgomery as the most beneficial to the city. Whereas further, after hearing the report of the committee, City Council of the city of Nagus is of the opinion that it is in the best interest of the city to enter into the banking services agreement with Bank Montgomery and desires to authorize Ronnie Williams, Mayor, to execute the banking services agreement and all attachments thereto and any other documents that may be required to complete the transaction. And now therefore be it ordained by the City Council in regular session convened as follows. One, that the recommendations of the committee are accepted, and the City Council of the city of Nagus does approve of the proposals submitted on behalf of Bank of Montgomery. Two, that the Honorable Ronnie Williams, Jr., Mayor, being is hereby authorized and empowered to execute the banking services agreement and all attachments thereto and any other documents that may be required to complete the transaction on behalf of the city of Nagus, and all in accordance with the general terms and conditions set forth in this ordinance. The said mayor is hereby given full and complete authority to incorporate in said instrument such terms, conditions, and agreements as may be necessary to protect the interest of the city in substantial compliance with the general terms and conditions set forth in this ordinance. And three, that if any part of this ordinance is for any reason held to be unconstitutional or invalid by the court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance, and the invalidity shall be limited to that specific portion so declared to be invalid. That is, four, the, that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately after publication according to law. And five, that all ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. And six, that this ordinance is advertised in accordance with law. And this is for introduction.
All right, thank you, Councilman, uh, Nielsen. Um, certainly we have Mr. Ken Hale, uh, the CEO and owner of Bank of Montgomery. Also, Mary? Mary, I don't know Ken or Mary, if y'all want to say something at this time, um, it'll be vote. Yes, sir, uh, here, state your first and last. This will be up for a vote at our next meeting, not sure what your availability is, but certainly want to give you an opportunity while you're here.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and, and council members. Um, just want to say thank y'all very much. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot, I, I get a little nervous in crowds, so I'm not a great public speaker. Uh, my name is Ken Hale, I'm the president and CEO of BOM Bank. I'm the fifth generation in my family to be at BOM Bank. Uh, we're very proud, uh, and honored and humbled, uh, to be awarded this contract. And, uh, we've, uh, worked very well with the city. I think we were the only bank who agreed and worked with the city on the funding for the, uh, uh, Train Depot. One of my favorite, uh, things we've ever done at the bank. We, we, we sent that out to some people last week to show them what we did, we're so excited, some out, some out-of-state people. Um, uh, if there's anything we can do, uh, I have, uh, Mary Bullock here, she's our CFO of the bank. She's been with me for twenty-three years. We have a great staff. Uh, I didn't even realize it till we, I just go to work every day, I don't pay attention to some things like this. We have a hundred and five employees here in the city now.
Wow.
So that, that actually kind of surprised me, I didn't even realize that. So again, thank you. Uh, I'm kind of known to ramble, so I better kind of quit talking about three minutes and be up. Steve, how you doing? Steve and I, Steve and I, we're in a running club together, he's a lot faster than I am, so yeah, yeah. But anyway, thank y'all very much, I'm very humbled. If there's anything we can do, any questions for the voting next month, uh, please let us know, and we'd be more than glad to work with y'all on to answer any questions or anything we can do.
Just real quick, Council, y'all got any comments or questions for Mr. Hale while we have him here?
I, I just want to say, I think Bank of Montgomery does a great job interacting with the community, uh.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, Ms. Smith, thank you very much.
Look, it's noticeable, it speaks for itself. I mean, a lot of, you see a lot of signs and financed by BOM. So again, we certainly appreciate the work and, um, looking forward to this, uh, relationship, um, as we continue to try to move the city forward in a positive direction.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Any more in question? Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you, sir, we appreciate it. All right, thank you, Kim. Okay, again, that's just introduced, we do have a couple more. Oh yeah, we've got a budget amendment, the Councilwoman, Alora Smith.
Yes, ma'am, this is amendment to the budget, ordinance number zero zero five of two thousand and twenty-five. And, um, let Ms. Clarissa elaborate on this, is she here?
No, she's not, but I do have some notes. Um, the budget adjustment is needed to cover unexpected increase in healthcare claims. So that's why we're coming to you at this time. We are self-funded, we are, and get this, it's going to be a shocker, we are currently exceeding premiums by one point five million. We're only asking for six hundred and fifty thousand to be transferred because the remainder will be recouped through our stop-loss coverage, and Ed can explain that a little bit. And then another note she wanted me to share, the in-bank balance for utilities is currently four point one million dollars. All right, just to kind of give you some idea of what we have, I guess, in the bank for our utilities balance. Stop-loss, Ed, you got something?
And you're talking about the health insurance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, uh, we have excess coverage insurance, we're, we're self-insured up to a limit, but once the claims get above a certain dollar amount, and Clarissa, is it two fifty, I believe? That's what they.
Oh, yeah, she's.
She's not here.
Oh, she said, I didn't see that, I couldn't see it. Yeah, I believe it was two fifty, so it's two hundred and fifty thousand. And then the stop-loss coverage will kick in and take over the rest of the expenses for that claim. And that's, you know, normal for being self-insured. And typically, uh, employers with a hundred plus employees, it's, you're more financially, um, better off going self-insured with the stop-loss coverage or excess coverage than you are going fully insured.
Okay, is that clear? Right, so again, these health insurance costs, and these are the type of things you don't know. Again, it's unexpected, it can happen, it just depends on what's going on throughout your population of folks who work at the city, type of thing, so. Um, but yeah, so it's just being introduced, so Clarissa will be here, but she did share that information with me.
And Mayor, and it's not unusual for, uh, the number of employees in the city we have, and, you know, other employers with a similar number to, at any given time, to have maybe two employees that, um, will get you to that stop-loss coverage, just, you know, at any given time.
Just expensive.
It is.
Yep. Okay. All righty, again, that's just being introduced. One more item on the agenda before we get to announcements, and it's a resolution, um, read by Councilwoman Washington Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number nineteen of two thousand twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise and accept the bid for the Nagus Regional Airport consisting in hangar door replacement airport improvement program, bid number zero six seven three. Whereas the city wish to advertise the public bids for the Nagus Regional Airport consisting of a hangar door replacement airport improvement program number three. I'm not going to read all it. Whereas the seal proposed shall be addressed to the City of Nagus office and the Director of Purchasing, four hundred Sabine Street, Nagus, Louisiana, seven one four five seven, or receive the City of Nagus purchase to Department, four hundred Sabine Street of Nagus, Louisiana. Whereas the City of Nagus will accept the seal electronic bids or project until two o'clock PM Tuesday, March the twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-five at the Nagus, at the City, at the Office of Director Purchasing, four hundred Sabine Street. And whereas the bid will be publicly open and read aloud at the location and the time here above. And whereas the reciprocally of the proposal, the committee remembers consisting Clarissa Brown Smith, Director Finance, Ed Lee, Director Purchasing, Justin Fosheu Airport Manager, and Dale Ness, and Councilman, are reviewing all make recommendation of the bids reviewed now for there be resolved by the City of Nagus in the legal session convened that the Honorable Ronnie Williams, Jr., Mayor, be hereby authorized and powered to direct the order of the public of the above bid. And I move to adopt resolution number nineteen in two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All right, motion made in seconded, I mean, it's a, it's a door on a hangar, is that right, Ed?
Big doors.
Big doors?
Big doors.
Big doors, not just any door.
That's right.
All right, big doors. All right, uh, any, any comment or question about, about this resolution?
One door, one big door.
Well, it's one, it's one opening, but there's multiple doors to cover the, the opening.
So it's got to be, it's, it's our hangar then?
The city owns the hangar, and it's currently leased to Air Data Solutions.
Okay.
And those are, the best we can tell, probably the original doors, that hangar was built probably in the nineteen thirties. It's the one that.
And those are, the best we can tell, probably the original doors, that hangar was built probably in the nineteen thirties. It's the one that Northwestern used for many years for their flight program. And the doors don't always operate. Sometimes you even have to get a tractor to push on the doors to open them. And uh, we, it, we've been working on this for two or three years now to try to get approval fi- from the FAA to fund it, and they finally have agreed to fund it, so it's not costing the city any money.
It's great.
Go ahead and say it, Ed.
This doesn't cost us any money.
None.
federally funded.
They're either paying for the engineering.
There you go.
Awesome, awesome, great, great, great. Okay, alright, y'all have extra questions y'all needed? Any other comments? Alright, Mr. Stacy, roll cover.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
Alright, that motion carries. Just a few announcements that we have. We've already done the financial report. Um, again, we always encourage people to download regroup. We use it often as we possibly can, uh, to notify the public of some things that are going on. And then Golden Akatish, as we are starting to get out of the winter season, head in the spring, and get busy with things like Blooming on the Bricks and um, you know, festivals and things of that nature, so we encourage you to um, certainly get that app. Alright, do we, I think we have a few more announcements. Okay, coming up this Wednesday at eleven o'clock, um, you've got the Golden Akatish Awards, a showcase in excellence, alright? And I think we, the fire department, public services, is that what it is? Alright, you are competing against?
I don't know, but we're the best.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so, so they compete against a few others. I think Public Works was around the neighborhood too, but they didn't make it to the last round, so. Uh, but we were hoping that the fire department is able to, you know, uh, win and be victorious and represent us well. Alright, but that's going on in the latter. They got some other things, you know, whole list of categories that they recognize with that one. Okay, so this is the Crew of Waggons. This is coming up this Saturday um, at three PM, and it's, you know, it's basically the animal parade, right? The children and pet parade is what we call it, so. And they have different awards that they give for costumes and a ten-dollar entry fee uh, for a family to register your pet. Uh, and it talks about what the parade route is. So that's, that, that's a fun, cute little thing to be a part of. And then there's the big parade happening at six PM. So uh, big deal. I think we'll get people to come in from different uh, areas to come into town to be a part of the parade. So it's, it's grown uh, over the years, and um, uh, really looking forward um, to, to the parade this year.
Crew diagnosis.
Blooming on the Bricks is gonna be uh, March eighth, uh, the next Saturday from nine AM to two PM. Um, you know, y'all know what that is, so just, it's a really good event. Hopefully, we have good weather, um, for a little, little bit of a change. Pub Crawl has been taking over. You may have seen this by Fauna. It's something that the Chamber has done in, in the years, in years past. Um, but Fauna has taken over now, so it's gonna be on the fifteenth um, of March from four to ten PM. Uh, and they've got who their uh, title sponsor is, and how you can get tickets at Eventbrite. That's it, okay? Alright, those are our announcements for now. Okay, at this time, uh, council, we're here, a motion to adjourn?
May I make a motion that we adjourn?
Motion is made in seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.
Okay.